My name is Carrie Perkins and I want to thank you guys all for coming out. I'm the organizer of Wayne County Freedom Keepers and we started this group in about May of 2020. Our mission statement is Wayne County Freedom Keepers exist to stand for truth and freedom, from medical and religious freedom to freedom from the deception and lies that are permeating our current culture. We seek to build a community of truth-seeking patriots in order to encourage and support each other as we stand up and take action to fight for the future of Wayne County. We meet once a month on the third Saturday typically. This month it was the fourth, we had a conflict. And typically we hear from a speaker, candidate, legislator, or public servant. If you've never been to one of our meetings before and are interested, there is an email list on the table by the door in the lobby and you can sign up to receive our emails. That's also where I will send recaps of all meetings, including this one, if you would like to share any content with other people. So today we are doing a Meet the Republican Candidates for Wayne County Commissioner Forum. This will be an interview style. I would like to invite the candidates up to the stage right now just for a brief introduction. So we have Dave McMillan, Matt Martin, Kyle Shanklin, and Steve Wolf. There's two seats opening up for Wayne County Commissioner. Ron Anstetz and Sue Semel are both retiring from their positions. Dave McMillan is running uncontested for one seat and then Matt Martin, Kyle Shanklin, Steve Wolf, and then there is also a Democrat, Carla DiMali, that are running for the other seat. This forum is just to serve to interview all four of our Republican candidates on issues relevant to the county commissioners. Dave McMillan has served as a Plaine Township trustee for the past 10 years, working on various projects demonstrating fiscal responsibility. He has taught for 11 years as building trades instructor at West Holmes High School and is the sixth generation to live on his family's farm. Matt Martin in the middle is ready to be the next generation of county government leadership. He is an experienced, proven conservative with deep roots in Wayne County. As a proud veteran, he is also a servant leader who values family and conservatism based upon biblical and common sense principles. Kyle Shanklin is a current Orville City Councilman-at-large. He's lived his entire 37 years of life in Orville. He currently works in retail in Worcester where he's an assistant store manager and he is a candidate for the people. Steve Wolf is a former small construction owner that has held management positions in several county organizations. Before Wayne County, he was an operations manager for Portage Metro Housing. He's been with Wayne County for 17 years, 10 as the Director of Environmental Services, and he has worked directly with county commissioners and is familiar with and has had involvement with current large projects. So the format of this event is as follows. Each candidate will answer the same eight questions. They will have two and a half minutes per question to answer. Gina is our timer. She will raise a 30-second warning sign when they're nearing the end of their time. Many of these questions have multiple parts. Do your best to answer as concisely as possible, knowing that this forum is meant to provide a snapshot of your views on these issues, given the time constraints. After one candidate has finished answering a question or run out of time, we will move on to the next question until we've completed all the questions. Then we'll have the next candidate brought out and we'll repeat the process with each consecutive candidate. Once we finish with the last candidate, the event will conclude and all are welcome to meet and talk with the candidates in the lobby until 12:00 PM. Please be respectful of the time of the church, as well as the volunteers who have come to help make this event a quality experience for all. We are recording this event, but ask that there be no other recording done. And we will share the link to the recording via email and social media as soon as it is available. This is the same thing that we did for our state rep forum last month. If you haven't seen that recording yet, look for it on social media and then please share. We really want to get this out to as many people as possible and the best way to do that via social media is just engaging with these posts and sharing them kind of whenever you see them. So please do that. And I will email the link with my email list, so if you would like to receive it directly, that's the best way to do it. The restrooms are right by the door that you walked in if you need that. There's also coffee in the lobby if you need that as well. Okay, I am going to dismiss you three to the lobby and then we will get started with our first interview with Dave. First question. Several years ago, the Wayne County Commissioners stopped funding Planned Parenthood with Title 20 tax dollars. If elected, would you commit to not giving our tax dollars to organizations like Planned Parenthood that are so closely aligned with abortion promotion? Can you elaborate on your position on this issue?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for putting this together too, Carrie. The question of are the county commissioners going to fund Planned Parenthood? And the answer is no. No, we're not. I am pro-life. Those are embedded in me as principles and morals and we're not going to send our tax dollars to Planned Parenthood.
Number two. Over a two-year period in 2021 and 2022, the Wayne County General Fund tax revenues grew by 24%. Every county revenue line increased, while according to the US Census estimates, Wayne County's population actually decreased by 0.3%. What will your approach be to taxing and spending the dollars you receive from the highly taxed Wayne County citizens? Would you commit to not raising taxes even if a recession hits and Wayne County revenues begin to drop?
Yeah, in my experience as township trustee, what I went into and what my belief system is, is first of all, never raise taxes. And going through the process of making tough decisions, and I've been in those seats where, you know, the easy thing to do as a local government leader is to raise taxes. The hard thing to do is buckle down and say, "We're not doing that." So what we have to do as local government leaders is just completely take that off the table. That's not an option. Raising taxes on our people, especially when you hear statistics like you're, "We've just increased our budget by 20%. Our population's increased by 0.3%." Those things aren't making sense. I know personally, my property tax went up 30% just this year. And so we're taxed enough and we need to be super efficient with our dollars and definitely not looking to raise anything. And I'm, like I said, as a leader, I'm just going to, we're going to take that completely off the table. That's not an option.
Question three. What factors would you consider when appointing board members to the Wayne County Public Library, the Developmental Disabilities Board, and the Children's Services Board? Would you prioritize an individual's ethics and integrity or past experience and educational background? If your appointments came forward with a tax increase request, how would you handle it?
Those are good questions. I think first of all, anytime you're appointing anybody to a board, you're looking for the right person. You know, I'm going to be elected and you guys are going to count on me to make the right choice. So as I make that right choice, I'm going to look for who's the best person for the job. Their principles and their ethics absolutely come into play for me. I also, you have to look at their past work experience. Anytime you're looking for anybody to lead anything, the best thing to do is look behind them. You know, look at what kind of wake they've laid in the past and you can see what is going to happen in the future. I'm very conservative. I think we need people in those appointed positions that are going to keep us in the right path, keep us focused on the right direction. We're going to, we're going to ask a lot of questions and any tax increase requests are going to come to the commissioners. We're going to dive into that question and look at the organization, whether that's library or mental health, and we're going to say, "Okay, where's the spending going? And why are you asking for an increase?" And then from there, I just said a minute ago, as far as tax increases, how I feel about that personally, that's something that in my current local government position, we just take it off the table. Because, and when you do that, you make decisions differently, right? You're not expecting a bailout or an iffy. You have to be so thorough when you make decisions and have that plan and then have an alternate to when the plan goes awry.
All right. Number four. Several bills recently in the Ohio Legislature would allow constitutional carry in county administration buildings. This would require the commissioners to pass a resolution allowing this to occur. Would you vote in favor of a resolution allowing citizens to engage in constitutional carry within the county administration buildings? Please elaborate on your stance here and also your view of the Second Amendment.
Yeah, absolutely. I have grown up with guns and I love to hunt. I love the outdoors. I am a strong supporter of the Second Amendment. I love what Ohio did with, you know, there's no permit for concealed carry. I think that's fantastic. As far as county administration buildings, the first thing we would do is the three commissioners is we would get together with all our directors and elected officials, you know, talk to the sheriff and see where they stand on some of these things. Because I, I know for, for me, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we're a team working together to make a big decision like that. If we want to allow people to carry guns into county buildings, that's not a decision I want to make by myself and we'd make that as a team.
Number five. The Butler County Commissioners have twice passed resolutions that roll back or forgive half-year property tax payments from their citizens. Given that property taxes have increased due to revaluations recently, would you consider a similar rollback? Under what conditions would you pursue this action?
I think that would be absolutely fantastic. Roll back taxes, cut taxes, that, that would be the ultimate. You know, that comes, and I, I would absolutely love to do that. I know that what is our greatest resource, especially when it comes to budgets, it's the human resource. And so before you can commit to something like that, you know, you see inflation and you, we have to have competitive wages for, we have to be able to attract talent at a county level with our employees. But that's definitely a goal of mine that I would love to do for Wayne County. I think it would be absolutely fantastic to roll back. So one of the first things I'll probably do is any chance I get to meet the Butler County Commissioners, we're going to definitely have a conversation of how you did this. What were you looking at? So many times in positions like this, it's, you know, you're going to run up to opposition, you're going to run into something you don't know the answer for. So it's all about building that network and finding the right answer. So that's great.
Number six. If as county commissioner, you had the authority to mandate masks and/or vaccines for employees, would you enforce such mandates? Please elaborate on why or why not.
You guys, this is good questions. I really appreciate these. I really do. Let's talk about masks. You know, it's funny how we quickly, COVID's over, we forget about that. And I'll tell you what, being a teacher, I, I was really, that was a tough time for me because I refused to wear a mask. And I got quite a bit of heat from administration and, you know, but staying strong in that, I just had a belief system that you cannot push that on somebody. Same with vaccinations. My medical history is my business. My family's medical history is my business. It's not the government's. And so I absolutely, in no certain way, will ever force those things on Wayne Countyans. And with that being said, I need groups like this. They're going to be essential to supporting me in office because those decisions are not easy. As a leader, you're going to stand in there and you're going to take a lot of heat and you need people to stand up behind you and say, "You know what? We believe in these decisions that you're making. We support you. We support Wayne County and we want to stand on those freedoms that are not going to be infringed for Wayne Countyans." So I'm asking you guys for your support. If, heaven forbid, those decisions come back down, I'm telling you right now, I will not enforce masks and I will not enforce vaccines.
There is a growing push for affordable housing or subsidized housing in Wayne County. Do you see this type of housing as beneficial or detrimental to our community? Would you publicly support or oppose these actions?
Affordable housing, right? You guys are, wow. These are good questions. So one of the things I did is when I got into the teaching world, I started as a carpenter and I got in, I actually have my master's in workforce. So what is workforce? Workforce is community. It's an interconnected spider web. If we want good jobs in Wayne County, we got to have places for people to live and they have to be affordable and they have to be nice and clean. And so absolutely, I support building affordable housing. Maybe you need to read, can you read that question to me again?
There's a growing push for affordable housing or subsidized housing in Wayne County.
Okay.
Do you see this type of housing as beneficial or detrimental to our community and would you publicly support or oppose these actions?
I would want to, before we would build more subsidized housing, I would want to personally make inquiries into how we're doing currently. You know, a lot of the things that we're subsidizing, I want to make sure that we're hitting the, hitting the bullseye before we just blindly build more. So that would probably be the first task and then we're going to look at needs. And like I said, when you take raising taxes off the table, how are we going to fulfill these needs? And they're not going to be easy, you know? It's going to take a whole team, it's going to take a whole community. But I am in favor of more housing for Wayne County because that helps our county. You know, especially when it comes to our kids. Where are they going to live? We look at land prices, they're going up, cost of even cars, housing, it's just going up, up, and up. We need, I want my kids to live in Wayne County and I, we want to make sure they have a place to live, so absolutely.
All right. The final question. Please share your top goals in office if elected and why you are the best candidate for the position of Wayne County Commissioner.
My top goals and why I'm the best candidate? I told Jonathan Hofstadter when I met with him first, and I've seen this play out in local government, I said, "I'm not coming in to the Wayne County Commissioner position with a big agenda. I'm coming in here saying, 'All right, I'm a servant. Use me. Let's get, let's get things done.'" And so I'm going to check my ego at the door and make it about the people. It's about you guys, it's about my kids, your kids, and everyone in the room and everybody in the county. And so we, you don't have to in local government have a huge agenda that, because there's enough going on already. You take it piece by piece. And so we're building a jail, we've got the county home, there's obviously things going on at the airport, looking at building another hangar. You're in charge of job and family services and the dog warden. Commissioners oversee about 15 direct programs. So we're going to be busy, busy, busy. And so as I look at it as priorities, as you get into it, you can be more efficient and you, it's a big old ship with a little rudder and it takes just a degree at a time to make it better. So that's what we're going to do.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Oh, thank you.
This is Matt Martin. Several years ago, the Wayne County Commissioners stopped funding Planned Parenthood with Title 20 tax dollars. If elected, would you commit to not giving our tax dollars to organizations like Planned Parenthood that are so closely aligned with abortion promotion? Can you elaborate on your position on this issue?
This is a very personal question for my life personally. There's no place for funding for groups like that, absolutely not. We have some great resources here in Wayne County in Worcester. The Pregnancy Care Center is an amazing organization that fills the needs, that can help step aside these women, families, as they have to make decisions. The personal side to this story is the, one of the bravest women that I've ever met would be my, my daughter's birth mother. So she was in a very tough situation in a foreign country that almost forced abortions and she chose to, to carry my daughter full-term and healthy. So, so that's a very personal area of my life that I feel strongly about.
Question two. Over a two-year period in 2021 and 2022, the Wayne County General Fund tax revenues grew by 24%. Every county revenue line increased, while according to the US Census estimates, Wayne County's population actually decreased by 0.3%. What will be your approach to taxing and spending the dollars you receive from the highly taxed Wayne County citizens? Would you commit to not raising taxes even if a recession hits and Wayne County revenues begin to drop?
I think we need to be very intentional with the money that we've been entrusted as stewards of that money to make the best decisions as possible. When there are increases, I think we need to find alternative ways rather than tax increases to fund those areas. I think that this position, the three commissioners have a large responsibility of, of, you know, good business practices and being stewards of what we've been entrusted with. As far as saying that I would never raise taxes, I don't think that's a fair statement because we don't know what the future holds, but I think that should be the absolute last thing that we should ever consider even to fix our problems. So I think it starts with good stewardship.
Question three. What factors would you consider when appointing board members to the Wayne County Public Library, Developmental Disabilities Board, and Children's Services Board? Would you prioritize an individual's ethics and integrity or past experience and educational background? If your appointments came forward with a tax increase request, how would you handle it?
I believe that appointing board members, especially like that, you'd need to look at several areas. I think you need to look at character, number one, to see what they value and how they value it, to be bipartisan. I think that you need to put people in there that are educated in those areas. That way we're not making reactionary decisions, we're thinking through those decisions. I think there's a, that's part of a model of leadership that I believe in strongly and that's transformational leadership, where you build others up around you and give them the opportunities to take areas of responsibility there. So I don't think it's just picking somebody off the street and plugging them and fill a, fill a seat. I believe you have to be very intentional about who you put in there. You know, their past track record says a lot, their moral values, absolutely. And I think that's in any position. I think you have to look at those areas, not just, these are very important boards here that, that are under the control of the Wayne County Commissioners, but I think that's in all areas that you have to really take the time and put the right people to have success in those areas.
Number four. Several bills recently in the Ohio Legislature would allow constitutional carry in county administration buildings. This would require the commissioners to pass a resolution allowing this to occur. Would you vote in favor of a resolution allowing citizens to engage in constitutional carry within the county administration buildings? Please elaborate on your stance here and also your view of the Second Amendment.
So I am a lifetime NRA member. I absolutely believe in constitutional carry. You know, that's our constitution. That's not something you can control or what you believe, what you don't believe. So I think that's, that's part of our constitution. So I do encourage that, as I do any other part of our constitution. As far as carrying in the administration buildings, I guess I would probably need to find, find, think about that one a little bit more. Right now, there's a sheriff in the, in the office right now as they're taking taxes just in case there might be an issue or some other reason provides security. I don't think that's Wayne County. So as far as gun ownership though, I absolutely support that. As a, you know, former military, that's, that's just something that I really enjoy as well, is firearms.
Question five. The Butler County Commissioners have twice passed resolutions that roll back or forgive half-year property tax payments from their citizens. Given that property taxes have increased due to revaluations recently, would you consider a similar rollback? Under what conditions would you pursue this action?
I'm under the belief if you owe a bill, then you're responsible for that bill. I know it's not related here, but just recently on national level, some school debts were forgiven and loans. And I don't, I don't understand that mentality. I think we're setting up future generations to know that, oh, somebody will always bail them out. So as far as the, the, the rollbacks there that you mentioned, I believe if you have a bill, that you're responsible to pay that bill.
Number six. If as county commissioner, you had the authority to mandate masks and/or vaccines for employees, would you enforce such mandates? Please elaborate on why or why not.
I don't, I don't believe that. That's an area to mandate. I think that's a, that's a free choice that we have as Americans and we should be afforded those opportunities to make those choices as we see fit. I think that we also need to be respectful of those who make their choices that maybe we don't agree with. So I think that's, I don't, absolutely do not think it's a mandate, but I feel, you know, if we can respect each other and their decisions, something on issues like this, then, then we should do that. If you feel like you need to wear a mask and have a vaccine, then I believe that's your choice. If you don't, then that's your choice too, but we all need to be found respectful of each other.
Number seven. There is a growing push for affordable housing or subsidized housing in Wayne County. Do you see this type of housing as beneficial or detrimental to our community? Would you publicly support or oppose these actions?
So I see several different areas with housing that are, that are an issue right now. The first is availability. The available houses right now, I believe, are going to become more available. We're seeing generation age and come out of their homes, so I think that more housing will become available. Affordability, we've, we've kind of trained our next generations that they can jump right into a first-time home of $250,000, $300,000. And I think we've done a huge disservice there with that. I believe that you should, you should buy, you know, an appropriate priced house. My first house, I think, was $70,000 and then we went into, you know, a $150,000 house. So I think there's a step up. We all want what our parents had, right? That's what, that seems like the entitlement of today. And I think there's some realtors out there, some lenders, that are doing a really fantastic job with educating first-time homebuyers, encouraging them to live within their means. And, and then as far as, I think we do need more housing in Worcester and in Orville and all the villages throughout, but I think that we need to be smart about that. We need to revitalize the areas that are rundown first and then look at the outside edges of those before we continue to take, you know, the valuable farmland away. But I do think we need transitional housing as well. We need some apartments, we need some townhouses for the, as our industry grows in these areas, we want to attract those people to come here. They're making their money here. We don't want to take that back out of Wayne County. We want them to live here. So if we can find this transitional type housing and, you know, it keeps the money in Wayne County until they're prepared to buy a home.
All right. Last question. Please share your top goals in office if elected and why you are the best candidate for the position of Wayne County Commissioner.
Sure. My absolute top goals of commissioners is to be a servant of the people, to work for the people, to be the voice of the people. As a commissioner, you have a lot of responsibility to do that. People that you might agree with, people that you don't agree with, you're still their commissioner at the, the end of the day and I think you need to keep that in mind. My goal is to continue the path that we're on as far as we're a healthy communities. We have a lot of growth potential. We, our identity is to, in agriculture and those businesses that support it, you know, and I think we need to maintain those areas. I think that we also need to grow our industries and let those industries that are here already expand. That's the jobs of our, members of our community. So the, the top goals is there is to, to continue on the path to allow Wayne County to continue succeeding in what we are and keeping our identity of what we have grown and love. This is, this is where we choose to raise our families and deliver our lives and I want to maintain that.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. This is Kyle Shanklin. The first question is, several years ago, the Wayne County Commissioners stopped funding Planned Parenthood with Title 20 tax dollars. If elected, would you commit to not giving our tax dollars to organizations like Planned Parenthood that are so closely aligned with abortion promotion? Can you elaborate on your position on this issue?
It's very simple. We need to protect our lives. There are certain situations that always come about and one thing, it shouldn't be a man's job to tell a lady what to do with her body. It should be ladies. It should only ever- It should only ever be voted on by ladies, in my opinion. Um, it may strike you as, as out of this world, but no man should vote on a woman's body. Um, I will not give money to an organization like that because there's always hidden agendas, and I don't like hidden agendas. Um, I mean, it's relatively simple and no.
Question two. Over a two-year period from 2021 and 2022, the Wayne County General Fund tax revenues grew by 24%. Every county revenue line increased while according to the U.S. Census estimates, Wayne County's population actually decreased by point-three percent. What will be your approach to taxing and spending the dollars you receive from the highly taxed Wayne County citizens? Would you commit to not raising taxes even if a recession hits and Wayne County revenues begin to drop?
So I, I had the, the ability to look there at the 2024, uh, final appropriations numbers, and it looks like we're sitting around twenty-four million to twenty-six million, um, unappropriated for the county. And that's a pretty good place to be if we have an emergency situation where we have to replace bridges or anything like that, or something happens to one of the buildings. Um, it's, it's a good place to be. I do not think we need to raise taxes at this time. Maybe never, but you can't say never because things can change. Um, we're already taxed enough. Property taxes went up thirty-seven to fifty percent. That's putting a lot of, of problems towards, towards our families. Um, my parents, they're struggling, they're on social security. Um, they don't have the extra money to go out and spend on, on this stuff. Retail stores, I work in one, our prices went up, our costs went up. Everything's going up, food's going up. Seven dollars for a box of cereal? Seriously? Couple of years ago, it was three. That, that's absolutely ridiculous. So any way we can keep, keep the prices down for people, taxes down for people, that's what we should be doing.
Question three. What factors would you consider when appointing board members to the Wayne County Public Library, Developmental Disabilities Board, and Children's Services Board? Would you prioritize an individual's ethics and integrity or past experience and educational background? If your appointments came forward with a tax increase request, how would you handle it?
One, I wouldn't go for my buddies. Um, I want the most qualified people in there. I want people with integrity. You can be the most qualified person in the world, and if you don't have integrity, it means nothing. Integrity is absolutely the most important thing. I want honest people in there that are going to hire more honest people. Um, it, it's, it's, that's as simple as, as I can make it. Um, yeah, we, we need honest people in there. That's it, yeah.
Question four. Several bills recently in the Ohio Legislature would allow constitutional carry in county administration buildings. This would require the commissioners to pass a resolution allowing this to occur. Would you vote in favor of a resolution allowing citizens to engage in constitutional carry within the county administration buildings? Please elaborate on your stance here and also your view of the Second Amendment.
I'm absolutely in favor of it. The more people we have that are responsible firearm owners, the better. It's, it's going to create a safer environment. Um, we have officers that are on standby. There's, uh, many videos going around that people going into city and county buildings auditing whether they can photograph and take videos inside, and, and it's always blown way out of proportion. Second Amendment is not up for debate. It is cut and dry. Everybody should be allowed to carry. Obviously not felons that have committed major crimes. I, I think we need to stop at that, but, um, I, I, everybody in this room should have a firearm. This would be the safest building in the county right now. It, it's pretty simple.
The Butler County Commissioners have twice passed resolutions that roll back or forgive half-year property tax payments from their citizens. Given that property taxes have increased due to revaluations recently, would you consider a similar rollback? Under what conditions would you pursue this action?
I'm gonna pursue it all the way to the state level, um, and, and push for, for further than that if I have to. The point is, right now, the tax on these homes is way too high. I covered it earlier. It's absolutely ridiculous. There's no reason for it. I don't care if somebody down the street sells a house for a million dollars. That shouldn't affect my tax increase. That's, that's, or yours. That, it's, it's absolutely ridiculous. And I know Jara went down and she was fighting to, to try and, um, lower ours here, and she was doing everything she could, um, from what I understand. And I believe her. I, I believe she has integrity, so, um, but we, we need to absolutely do something to, to help our citizens here with the, the tax increases. Um, whether we look at possibly lowering the sales tax in the county, six-point-five, I mean, we're doing okay. Six percent, we can get by. Um, just purely based on the numbers. But yes, we need to do what we can to reduce the taxes on our people because the prices keep going up, we're gonna price them right out of their homes.
Number six. If as county commissioner, you had the authority to mandate masks and/or vaccines for employees, would you enforce such mandate, mandates? Please elaborate on why or why not.
Uh, no. I'm not a sheep. I, I, I'm not gonna, not gonna play along with that. Um, I hope there's, I'm not gonna offend anybody in here, but the, the Democrats, the, the leftists, they like to tell us what we can do with, we have to do with our bodies, but they don't like it when we talk to them about the abortion. It, it's, it's a two-way street. It, it's not a one-way. Um, we don't get to, you don't get to. And, yeah, I mean, that's pretty cut and dry. Uh, they, nobody should be telling anybody to wear a mask or it's, it's your body, it's your choice. Um, yeah, no.
Question seven. There's a growing push for affordable or subsidized housing in Wayne County. Do you see this type of housing as beneficial or detrimental to our community? Would you publicly support or oppose these actions?
I absolutely do support, um, affordable housing. I, there's two that Habitat for Humanity homes that just went up, um, down the street from my house. It's the placement of the proper families. If, if they truly deserve it and need it and can keep it up and take care of it, then absolutely. But we don't want it to become a halfway house. Um, we, we don't need any of that. Granted, there are quite a few out there, um, for rehabilitation and such of, of criminals that are getting out. They have to have somewhere to go. Um, some of them are reformed, some of them just revert back. I know because they come in and steal from us all the time. It's a revolving door, and one day they go in, two days later, they're back in trying to steal again. Doesn't matter if we know trespassing, but it's, it's kind of along the same lines. The, the housing, we, sorry, I kind of went off a little tangent there, but, um, I'm passionate about it. It, I, I think everybody deserves, um, affordable housing, and, and that goes along with the taxes. I mean, they're gonna have to pay taxes on the house once, once they have it, so, you know, we need to reduce it to make it a little easier on everybody in, in this hard world right now that has been flushed down the toilet.
All right. Final question. Please share your top goals in office if elected and why you are the best candidate for the position of Wayne County Commissioner.
My top goals are safer county. I want to lead with integrity, transparency, and engagement. If you have an issue at ten o'clock in the evening and you need to talk to me about it, call me. I will answer because at that time I'll be working for you 24/7. Um, transparency, stop in the office, I'm there. You know, I have an open, I will have an open-door policy. Uh, I will lead with integrity. I will not just go with what I feel because it's not about me, it's about you. That is fully in my campaign slogan. Kyle Shanklin, a candidate for the people. I am literally here for you. I am an extension of your voice, not my own. That's the way it should be. That's the way everybody in political office should be. We should be listening to you, not ourselves, or not our high, high-dollar donors, anything like that. Um, I'm very passionate about safety, um, public safety. We need to put a little bit more funding into our Sheriff's Department. I mean, twenty minutes to get to a call is, is horrendous. Uh, Orville just went to part-time fire department, cut their times down from eight-minute response, less than three minutes, which is extremely good. And we needed the same with Sheriff's Department. I mean, somebody breaking into your home, you don't want to sit on the phone for twenty minutes and wait. You would hope they would be there in ten minutes, less. Um, we gotta correct the revolving door at the, at the jail. Uh, there's a couple of problem areas in streets, roads that I would love to see fixed. We're having way too many accidents back Orville Road, the S-curves. We need to do something there. We need to do guardrails, um, to maybe prevent some of that. Uh, Fulton and 57, we gotta figure that out. There's way too many accidents there. Couple have lost their lives. Um, but I, I will, I will push to have every one of those fixed. Can't promise it. I will never make a promise because you never know if you can keep them. There are two other commissioners that have to make the same decision. Thank you for your time. I love these events, and I appreciate you taking the time to put this on.
Thanks, Kyle. We're welcoming our last candidate. This is Steve Wolf. Question one. Several years ago, the Wayne County Commissioners stopped funding Planned Parenthood with Title 20 tax dollars. If elected, would you commit to not giving our tax dollars to organizations like Planned Parenthood that are so closely aligned with abortion promotion? Can you elaborate on your position on this issue?
Boy, that is a tough one, isn't it? Um, no, I, I don't think I would, uh, uh, I'm gonna have to tell a story here about my granddaughter when the, when they brought her out and handed her to me for the first time, and I looked at that little baby and I said, "How could anybody do that to a child?" No, I absolutely would not, uh, allow tax money to be used for anything like that.
Question two. Over a two-year period in 2021 and 2022, the Wayne County General Fund tax revenues grew by 24%. Every county revenue line increased while according to the U.S. Census estimates, Wayne County's population actually decreased by point-three percent. What will be your approach to taxing and spending the dollars you receive from the highly taxed Wayne County citizens? Would you commit to not raising taxes even if a recession hits and Wayne County revenues begin to drop?
Okay. I think, I think one of the biggest reasons why, uh, sales tax revenues are up is because of the amount of development that's gone on. Um, I, I looked at the, at the population of Wayne County, it's about seventeen, one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand or so. It's only grown by about one-point-nine percent over the last decade. Uh, so a lot of the tax revenue that's coming in is coming from the development, the new businesses, and it's all sales tax revenue. Um, I'm not in favor of raising any taxes for any reason, but, uh, I can't really say for sure that you'd have to, you have to look at your situation when it happens to make sure that you know, uh, the right way forward. I think the county commissioners, uh, have done an excellent job, uh, over the last decade since I've been involved with them. Uh, when I first started in Wayne County, the, things were tough then. I actually went five years without a raise, uh, as, as did all the rest of the Wayne County employees. Uh, but they got things under control, um, without raising taxes, and, and I think that's possible.
Number three. What factors would you consider when appointing board members to the Wayne County Public Library, Developmental Disabilities Board, and Children's Services Board? Would you prioritize an individual's ethics and integrity or past experience and educational background? If your appointments came forward with a tax increase request, how would you handle it?
Well, I think you have to look at people's moral fiber if you're gonna appoint them to anything that's gonna have anything to do with education of children. Uh, the, the Wayne County Public Library being one of those entities. Um, of course, education has a lot to do with it, but, um, I'm not a highly educated man, but I do have one thing that, um, a lot of the people probably in this room share with me is common sense. Um, we have to, we have to look at the, look at all these boards and look at the people that might do the best job, not just, uh, because they have a certain education or they have a certain background or they're from a certain place. Um, I sit on several different boards in Wayne County and in the state, uh, and a lot of it has to do with the, my knowledge of environmental, the environmental business, but a lot of it has to do with the fact that I'm willing to reach out and I'm stretching myself to make sure I do the right thing.
Question four. Several bills recently in the Ohio Legislature would allow constitutional carry in county administration buildings. This would require the commissioners to pass a resolution allowing this to occur. Would you vote in favor of a resolution allowing citizens to engage in constitutional carry within the county administration buildings? Please elaborate on your stance here and also your view of the Second Amendment.
Okay. Really good. Um, the, uh, the founding fathers didn't write the Second Amendment because the deer were coming. Okay? They, they wrote the Second Amendment because, uh, we have to make sure that the, the population is strong enough to be able to, uh, handle themselves with a tyrannical government. Um, I, I am a concealed carry permit holder and have been for the last fifteen years. I, I believe in concealed, concealed carry, and I also believe in, uh, proper training. Everybody should have, uh, required to have a certain number, amount of training and be able to, uh, show that they have had, um, um, continuing training to be able to renew licenses. So I really believe that if you're gonna have a license, every time you renew that license, you should be able to show that you've taken fifteen hours or twenty hours of instruction. Um, yes, I would be for, as long as we know that the people that are carrying weapons, there's, there's a few different people that carry weapons. Some, some people just want to feel like Big Shot. Some people carry them for the right reasons. I carry, I believe I carry mine for the right reason. I don't do it for protection of myself. Uh, I'm not gonna stand by and watch an innocent person get hurt, um, and then have to live with that the rest of my life. Uh, if somebody blows in the door with an AR-15, I'm gonna be out there in front trying to get them to stop what they're doing. And I think we need people like that in this country. Um, I think that if more people carried guns, I believe that there would be less crime because, uh, the criminals aren't looking for the people that are gonna be the hard cells, they're looking for the innocents. Um, I'm not an innocent, so, uh, they would, I would be someone that they might shy away from.
Question five. The Butler County Commissioners have twice passed revolution, resolutions that roll back or forgive half-year property tax payments from their citizens. Given that property taxes have increased due to revaluations recently, would you consider a similar rollback? Under what conditions would you pursue this action?
This would have to be something that would have to be discussed with the auditor's office and, and, and actually every, um, elected official in Wayne County, uh, everyone gets a portion of that money towards their budget. Um, I would need to know whether we could actually function as a county. There, the government only has a couple of things to do. They, they have to protect you to do the things that you want to do, and they have to maintain the infrastructure, which is extensive. Um, and we've, we've Um, and we've, we've built a monster here. So if we can't fund the programs that we have and we can't take care of the infrastructure that we have, that we use every day, um, that would have to be this decision that would have to be made. And that would have to be made with all of the elected officials.
Number six. If as county commissioner, you had the authority to mandate masks and/or vaccines for employees, would you enforce such mandates? Please elaborate on why or why not?
Boy, these are really good. Uh, no, I would not mandate um, vaccines or masks. Um, I believe that uh, your health is your business. Uh, and I, I don't think that any government agency has the right to get involved in your personal business. Uh, like I said before, the, the government is here for a couple of reasons. That's to protect your rights to do what you want to do and to take care of the infrastructure. Um, personal healthcare choices are your choice, uh, and no one else's. And frankly, I don't believe in, vaccines did good things back in the day. Okay, they, they cured things like polio and, and smallpox and things like that. The new vaccines that are being produced are not the same, of the same caliber. These are more along the line of DNA-altering type medicines. Uh, they, they alter the DNA in your body to be able to resist certain types of viruses that might come along. Um, this is like tend to cloning. Uh, I think we've gotten too, way too far out there with this kind of stuff. And uh, no, I do not agree with it at all.
Number seven. There's a growing push for affordable housing or subsidized housing in Wayne County. Do you see this type of housing as beneficial or detrimental to our community? Would you publicly support or oppose these actions?
Well, I spent a, uh, I spent some time in metro housing. I was the operations manager in Portage County. Uh, we took care of 650 public housing units. That experience gave me an inside look at what happens to people when they don't have help. Yes, there are people that are going to take advantage of that situation. But it doesn't matter what situation you put up in front. Uh, somebody's going to try and figure out how to con you or, or change the rules or alter the rules or maybe get in between a couple of rules. So people need help. And, and I, and I believe affordable housing is something that needs to be looked at seriously. I really don't believe that if it's done correctly, uh, I don't think it would be something that would be detrimental to the rest of the county. Uh, if, if affordable housing is needed, then yes, we should be, absolutely should be looking at it. The Portage area, it was a tough place. Um, we had shootings, uh, we had fires and we had uh, one, the night that I resigned was a night that somebody got pistol-whipped and another guy got shot in one of our, and I was always the second one to get called. Uh, they called the executive director and then me. Uh, and I resigned after that because I, it was nerve-wracking. But I look at the housing around Wayne County that, that Wayne Metropolitan Housing has available and they do a really good job. Their places are nicely kept. Um, I've had occasion to deal with some of the people that lived there and they were pleasant and respectful. Uh, I think that there's a lot of people out there that need us to give them a helping hand. And I think if we don't do that, um, I think this lends a lot to the homeless problems that we have here in Wayne County. And that's kind of stuff needs to be solved. I don't have all the answers, but, but I sure would like to look at it.
Okay, last question. Please share your top goals in office if elected and why you are the best candidate for the position of Wayne County Commissioner.
Of course, I think I'm the best candidate because I'm here, you know? But uh, I, I know the county Commissioner's Office. I've been dealing with them for 10 years. I know the policies, I know the personnel, and I know the projects that are going on, the large projects, actually. One of them is a sewer, sewer project up in Sterling, which is basically driven by me. I'm the one that's helping write the specifications for that. Some of the things I'd like to see uh, the Wayne County do is a, a GIS program uh, that's available to everybody in the county. Uh, this could aid fire departments. Um, if, if a fire company gets called out on a fire and we have everything and every asset in that small village GIS, they'll be able to type in the address of that house and all of the hydrants within 200 feet will light up. And then those hydrants could be, there could be dropdown boxes on them to give them vital information, how many feet per second they can expect to get, uh, whether that hydrant has had work done lately, whether it's been exercised. Um, the next is a grant writer. I would like to see a grant writer put on the payroll in Wayne County that everyone has access to. During the last 10 years, all of the projects that I've been involved in have had some type of grants attached to them. Um, the Commissioners were, I've been very generous with the Environmental Services Department and allowed me to do a lot of infrastructure work over the last 10 years, uh, which would not have been possible without grants. And, but it takes someone that knows the systems and knows they're very complicated. They, it's hard to fill them out. Uh, you have to be diligent, but all of the small villages can't afford people like this. So I want everybody to be able to have access to something like that. Um, and I think the, a lot of these small villages would benefit from that. Oh, thank you. Uh, I really got the most important one coming. I, I really need, the county needs to think about having a disposal, a central disposal spot for septic. Uh, there's 117,000 people in Wayne County. 50% of them live in rural areas. So they deal with septic tanks and wells. And then a lot of the small villages have disposal problems too. That's what we need to do. We need to set up a disposal place. Thank you for counting me down there.
All right, thank you Steve.
Thank you.